Good evening. I'm Linda Craig with the League of Women Voters of South Samatteo County. Tonight is our candidate forums forum for the City of Redwood City Council candidates. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that does not support either candidates or parties, but we do provide public forums such as this to encourage voters to learn more about the candidates and be sure to vote. This evening, we will be, we have six candidates who are running for three seats on the Redwood City Council. Our sole interest this evening is to allow the candidates to present their positions on the issues, and we will be having opening statements by each of the candidates and then questions from the audience. We have cards available if you wish to submit them in writing. We will not be taking oral questions. We will be taking them in writing, and then each candidate will have an opportunity to answer each question, and then we'll have closing remarks at the end. To begin, we ask that you turn off your cell phones, or at least mute them, and then we will begin with the statements from the candidates. They have drawn numbers, and so they're seated in the order that they drew, and so our first speaker will be Corinne Rankin here in two minutes.
My name is Corinne Rankin, and I'm running for city council. I was born and raised in Redwood City, and my father started our family business here in 1968. I was inspired to run for city council back in 2011 when there was an assembly bill called AB 109, otherwise known as prison realignment. That basically said that the state of California had to release hundreds and thousands of inmates from state prisons back into our communities. Now, those of us in the criminal justice field, we knew that this was going to have a serious impact on crime, and at that time, I noticed that no one on our council had a background in public safety, and this is something that was going to be needed going forward. And as a result of AB 109, crime has increased throughout the state of California, and Redwood City is no exception. Auto thefts have increased 44% in Redwood City. Felony assaults have increased 48% in Redwood City alone. Ensuring public safety and maintaining our quality of life are the most critical issues facing Redwood City. As our residents and population grows, this is an important issue that needs to be addressed on an ongoing basis. Another issue I have is with the fire department. Our Station 9 engine is nonoperable, and it's not nonoperable because it doesn't work, it's nonoperable because we don't have enough firefighters to properly man that engine. Should a fire break out downtown, the engine downtown would not be able to respond, and every second counts when it comes to saving lives, as we've learned from the two apartment fires we've had this year. Again, public safety is my area of expertise, and it is this expertise that I will bring to council to benefit the residents of Redwood City.
Next speaker will be John Seibert, and I forgot to mention, we do have a timekeeper here in the front row, and Joanne will be letting you know when you have one minute left and then when to stop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. John?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for tonight, and thank you all for coming out. I grew up in a small town in the Santa Cruz Mountains and was raised with the belief that everyone should give back to their community. Before moving to Redwood City in 1997, I served my community in Felton as a Felton volunteer on the Felton Volunteer Fire Department as a firefighter and EMT. When I moved to Redwood City, I quickly tried to find a place to get involved and was eventually appointed to the Planning Commission in 2001, and then eight years later was appointed, elected to my first term on the city council. My beautiful daughters and I are very proud 16-year residents of Redwood City, who have lived very close to downtown when it was still dead in the dead days, near Roy Cloud for about 12 years, and more recently, were privileged to live back in downtown when it's certainly not the dead days. In August, while on family vacation in North Lake Tahoe, I was approached in a store by a gentleman who saw I was wearing a Redwood City T-shirt. He was from the peninsula and began to tell me the story about growing up here and referring to Deadwood City and how he had just come back for the Blues Festival and how amazed he was at how vibrant Redwood City had gotten to be. Smiling the whole time, I eventually was able to introduce myself as a city councilman. "You guys have done a great job, and I can't wait to go back," is what he said. Yes, we have done a great job, together, our entire community, our businesses, our schools, our nonprofits, our faith communities, the city staff and leadership have done a fabulous job. Some of the priorities we focused on are things that I will continue to make a priority: balancing budgets. It's foundational to everything we do, and we've done it four years in a row without using reserves. The renaissance of our downtown, our unprecedented amount of housing and top-notch office space under construction will ensure thriving retail, entertainment, and dining. A continued focus on public safety that makes Redwood City a safe city, and given my experience as a firefighter, I believe I know what it takes to do that. Addressing the traffic nightmare of 101 and Woodside Road, on Monday night in these chambers, we'll vote to make a huge step forward in that regard. To create additional opportunities for our seniors and youth and protect our quality of life, including our nationally award-winning parks and libraries. I believe Redwood City has a toehold on greatness, and what we need right now is experienced and proven leadership.
Thank you. Next speaker is Diane Howard.
Thank you. My name is Diane Howard. I'm a wife, I'm a mother, I'm a nurse, I'm a former city council member and former mayor. As former mayor and council member, I helped spearhead the renaissance of downtown, the creation of a successful water recycling program. We built a new city hall, new library, new fire station, two community centers, schools. We renovated multiple parks and playgrounds, all while maintaining a balanced budget. I have always been a champion for community participation, most notably in the development of the Downtown Precise Plan and the Updated General Plan. I will use my leadership skills and experience to address issues that are important to all of us: public safety, maintenance of our infrastructure, job creation, thoughtful housing development, and financial stability. If elected, there are three areas I consider a high priority that we will need to focus on right away: our budget. Redwood City has an $80 million budget with a 20% reserve at this time. Next year, we will have a property tax shift of $2 million that will be taken away, and the following year, an additional $2 million. We need to find additional innovative ways to generate revenue and reduce the costs while continuing to provide the quality of service that the people of Redwood City have come to expect. Secondly, our downtown. We have a wonderfully successful downtown. It is vibrant. We've laid the foundation and made a significant investment. Now, we must protect our investment by learning to manage our success. Thirdly, our incredibly diverse community. It is our strength as well as our biggest challenge. We need to ensure that we are offering a wide range of housing, job, retail, and entertainment opportunities for our diverse groups. Redwood City is a work in progress, and we have much more to do. I believe my leadership and experience will allow me to immediately tackle these challenges. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ernie Schmidt.
Thank you. Let me first start by saying thank you to the League of Women Voters. Your involvement in ensuring the voters are informed come Election Day should be applauded. Thank you. My name is Ernie Schmidt, and I'm proudly running for Redwood City City Council. My beautiful wife and I and my two pugs, Buddy and Bailey, have made this a home since 2001. My decision to run was not only about the next generation of leadership, but about bringing fresh ideas, a fresh perspective to the table. It was about the passion that I have for serving this community and in the fire in my belly to getting it done, together, all of us. It's about continuing to engage all of you, and for those in this community who know me, you know I'm out there always knocking on doors. I will reach out to as many people that have the time to offer me their opinions and/or their ideas to help ensure that our city is the best city in the peninsula. It's about ensuring that we make, when we make that call to our police department or fire department, that we know that they are going to be there. It's about ensuring that the quality of life that we have to come to expect from our city is second to none, and we do that by searching for ways to expand our revenue base and looking for ways to replace the money that was taken away from our state. It is about expanding housing opportunities for all. My years of community involvement, my experience not only in private industry, most importantly on the Planning Commission, provides me with the experience and skills to make government work for the benefit of all of us. Land issues have been one of the most important issues facing our city and will continue to be. Your next council member will need to bring these skills, experience, and the fresh perspective to ensure Redwood City continues to be the great city that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is James Hahn.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to everyone who came. Thank you to the League for putting on this forum. My name is James Hahn, and I am running for city council in this election season. I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I was born and raised here, went to Roy Cloud School, and went to McKinley Middle School as well, and in the mid-'90s, when my parents divorced, a few years later, my mother had to leave the peninsula and move to Koreatown in LA because the housing prices were too much for her here. When I came back from school five years ago, I also struggled looking to find a place to live here in my hometown, and if it wasn't for a great landlord who was offering a fair rent hundreds below market rate, I wouldn't have been able to return. So that's actually what motivates me to run, because Stanford University, just to give some background, they released a study yesterday on poverty in California, and so there's an official poverty measure in the nation, but that doesn't account for cost of living. And what Stanford did is they accounted for cost of living in the Bay Area, and they showed that one in five people, just under 19% of people in Samatteo County, are in poverty, and it's specifically because of housing costs. So I'm running because I think we need some balance to the perspective that we have on city council. There's a lot of creative things we could do now to bring affordable housing to Redwood City, to protect Redwood City's heritage as a place where housing was always generally affordable, diverse, open to working-class folks, open to middle-class families. We need to make sure we protect this heritage, and we need to make sure that when we're developing, we're doing it responsibly, making sure that we're accounting for traffic, accounting for environmental concerns, and building with all of our community in mind and not just a chosen few. Thank you very much, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final opening statement is Jeff G.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of you for being here tonight and spending part of your Wednesday evening. I'm Jeff G., council member, and honored to currently serve as your vice mayor. I'm a resident of Redwood Shores, married and have two children. I brought my skills as an architect, construction expert, expert in land use, finance, business, and public sector knowledge to help lead our city and focus on the council's priorities of financial sustainability, public safety, and infrastructure. I've championed the replacement of the 101 Woodside Road interchange, fixing the bayfront flooding issue, the use and expansion of recycled water, and in my role as a board member on SAM Trans to revision public transit for Redwood City and the county. With regards to public safety, I have tremendous confidence in our command staff. Station 9 located downtown will have a new two-person rescue squad to respond to medical emergencies instead of a ladder truck that's there now. We have a new shared services fire agreement with the City of San Carlos. On July 30th, 24 new firefighters and captains joined our fire department. Yesterday, five new police officers took their oath to protect and serve, and last December, we promoted 16 police officers into new leadership positions. Over the last two years, we've invested more in our public safety organizations than the past 10 years. Four years of balanced budgets and a reserve achieved through working with our labor groups, looking at total compensation, streamlining government operations, and modest revenue generation. And as you've heard, the state is getting ready to take away 5% of our budget. For me, this is the most important issue as we find ways to continue to provide city services that you deserve without increasing taxes. Unlike our elected officials in Washington, we cannot print our own money, we cannot run a deficit, and we cannot shut down government. We need to take care and protect our community, and you have my commitment and promise to not allow what is going on in Washington, Stockton, or Detroit to happen here in Redwood City. I ask for your support for another term.
Thank you very much. And now we'll begin with questions from the audience. It's about 7:15, so we have about an hour, and we'll try to work in as many questions as we can. As you remember, each candidate will have an opportunity to answer each of the questions, and I will begin from this end and with the first question, and then rotate, beginning the second question. We'll begin with John. So at this point, I'll begin with Ms. Rankin here. The first question for all of you is, considering hundreds of new housing units being constructed downtown, how would you propose the city meet the needs of families such as schools, childcare, and parks? One minute.
The City of Redwood City is beginning a new community benefits program. It's just in the inception stage right now, and I believe that we can move this project along and start the discussions quickly and make things happen quickly. When new developers come in and they want to develop in Redwood City, we would like them to give back and contribute to our city when it comes to schools and parks and the things we need. These discussions need to start happening very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert.
Partnerships is the easy answer. I've worked very closely with Redwood City 2020 and with our school board, and we're actually already begun conversations of a school district's facilities master plan in terms of that issue. In terms of childcare and parks, I think we've got to get creative. We just recently approved a joint use agreement with schools so that the city officially has use of school sites as parks, and that creates a great opportunity in and around downtown. We need to continue to look to partner with developers. As Corinne said, we recently moved forward to the very beginning of a community benefits package that will allow us to talk to developers about investing in parks and in other public amenities, whether that's affordable housing or other things. Childcare is something we have a rich track record with, especially in the shores is a great example of placing childcare around business centers, and we'll continue to partner with developers and with other organizations to provide that in Redwood City. Childcare, the other issue that we need to continue to do is make childcare a right by zoning, and we have done that and supported that in Redwood City, and our general plan supports that.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
Thank you. The housing units that are being proposed, the majority of them are in our downtown. That wasn't by accident. That came because we had a Downtown Precise Plan, and we planned for housing to be put in our downtown along with the retail, commercial, office space, and entertainment. Urban planners are saying that if a suburban community is going to survive, you must provide amenities with your housing, and that's what we are doing in downtown Redwood City. The way we do that is partnering with our different agencies around the community, our schools, our businesses. We are doing that already. One such example is with Redwood City 2020, where we are working with schools, business, the cities, our elected officials, in order to provide the quality of life that we need for the people of Redwood City so they will be able to live, work, play, and enjoy the community of Redwood City. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
So, Mr. Seibert had mentioned partnership. I was going to say collaboration, and I think as a planning commissioner, one of the things that we've been able to successfully do is, for example, with the 24-hour Nautilus Spa that's going to be built across the street from Summit High School. And what they're going to do is they're going to partner up with them in order to be able to provide their gymnasium for those students. But parks, you know, as we continue to grow, parks is going to be, is a huge issue. Just a couple of years ago, somebody, a good friend of mine who works at Summit, had a problem finding a baseball field for their baseball team, and we were able to collaborate with Kenyatta College to be able to provide a baseball field for their baseball season. So collaboration is going to be huge. Yes, we are going to continue to grow and grow, but if we continue to do the great partnerships that this city council has been doing and the Planning Commission as well, I think we're not going to have any problem to meet those needs.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
So, the community benefits package that the city is looking into is, according to the housing advocates that I've spoken to, on a two-year timeline, and it's something that developers can opt into. So it's not a required thing that developers should do. So although it's a great thing to explore, there are things we should be doing now in order to bring benefits to our community. Some of the things we can do is to explore a commercial linkage fee where developers who build retail, retail space, business space in our downtown are asked to pay into the community for the jobs, housing, and balance impact that they create with their development. Another idea is to make sure that development is taken off the table for the salt flats so we have a great open space area for the folks who live closer to downtown, who don't live close to Edgewood Park or Stafford Park. We need to also make sure that we support AB 1229, which is a bill sitting on the governor's desk that will restore local control and clarify to local governments that they can plan for affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. G.
Well, thank you very much. And there's a lot going on, and our blueprint is our general plan and our Downtown Precise Plan. Schools are benefiting already with the school impact fees from the housing that's being built. We have a park-and-leave fee that already accumulated over $7 million. The key, though, is where do we put them? We don't have parks in all the right places, and the partnerships and leverage resources are really key to making things happen. One of the most exciting things for the residents and friendly acres with the approval of Stanford, and I was talking to some residents the other day, was the park that Stanford was going to create for that neighborhood. I have not found anyone who's willing with their neighbors to say, "You can go ahead and take my four homes and build a park." So we have to look for those opportunities to collaborate, partner, and leverage to bring school sites, parks, and put them in the right place along with daycare at our business centers. And we have done that with our vision. We've done that in Redwood City, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. Now, the second question will begin with Mr. Seibert. This is, what is your opinion on the city's turning over to homeowners, the responsibility and cost of maintaining sidewalk and street trees in front of their homes?
Thank you. I think this is an issue that, as we've been out walking, you see opportunities that people want to better their frontage of their home, their curbside. And so I think it's an opportunity, especially in days where the city is, has very limited resources in these areas, to continue to work with people, to partner with them to beautify that area. We have given people freedom in how to do that and partner with them in, both in street trees, to organizations like City Trees, but also in the maintenance of their sidewalks. I do think we need to continue to look at opportunities in cases where it's really bad and people may not have resources, especially in areas where there are a higher concentration of schoolchildren, that we need to continue to look at opportunities to support that for people who may not totally have the means to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
I think it's extremely important for our city to maintain our infrastructure, and that includes our sidewalks, our easements. The partnership that we've developed over the years with the neighbors has been a very positive one. I've walked in the neighborhoods where people are very willing to share cost in order to have their sidewalks of a high-quality nature. If they want trees, we have a partnership with City Trees where they go out and people go out with them and plant trees in front of their yard, and also, they're taught how to prune them and how to take care of them. This is the kind of collaborative efforts I think that the city needs to do more of. I find people in the community are very willing and able to step up and do it because they have pride in their community about this. I do agree with John Seibert that there may be areas where we need to step up and absorb the cost. I'm thinking of crosswalks around schools, maybe someone in a neighborhood who may be going around in a wheelchair, for instance. We may need to do a curb cut at our cost. I'm just thinking that these are the things we can take one at a time, but partnership is what it's about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
So I really appreciate this question because I just, this last couple of weeks, and one of the owners of a restaurant on Broadway wanted to partner up with City Trees in order to be able to plant trees in front of his, in front of his restaurant. And ultimately, it ended up being that two other business owners wanted to partner up and pay for those costs to be able to beautify that area. So I think it does take a great deal of partnership with these business owners, and I think it goes along the same lines with the homeowners. I do agree that we are going to find residents that do want to beautify their area and just don't have the means to do it. And Redwood City, I don't believe, has ever been a city to turn their backs away from anybody who they could help in regards to beautifying their city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
So this question goes back to my concern over responsible development. When I've been speaking to people in the community, they are, they do have pride in their community, and they are willing to shoulder some of the burden due to the loss of city services, but their question is, with all the downtown development we're seeing, the economic boom, we're seeing the revitalization, why isn't that being reflected in city services? I've spoken to city workers who've told me that they feel like they're doing the job of three people for the price of one. And so when we're bringing all these developers into our community, growing the economy, who is exactly benefiting, and how do we make sure that everyone benefits? Like, the Stanford project was a great project, but in return for paying millions to the community in specific programs, they got a pass on their property tax. So why aren't we looking at things like that? Why aren't we making sure that people who want, companies who want to invest and profit in our communities are giving back to our people as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. G.
Thank you very much. The issue of trees in our community brings a lot of passion, and there's always conflicts between passionate of trees and our sidewalks. We walked, I walked a homeowner association on Horgan Avenue where the homeowner association was proposing to tear down or remove 30 redwood trees, and I could match one person passionately for it, one person against it. The same in Redwood Shores. We have to find ways to maintain our tree canopy as well as our sidewalk infrastructure and partner because we don't have the resources. You know, I've run into many people who say, "I'm a taxpayer. I expect this." Well, the reality is that Redwood City gets less than 18% of the property taxes that we pay. After the state, the schools, and everyone else takes their piece, Redwood City only gets 18%. And until we can fix those formulas, we're going to have to continue to look to partnerships with homeowners, with businesses, and for those that aren't able to afford, we need to come up with a financing plan so that we can have everyone take pride in our community.
Thank you. I see that the time goes very quickly on these questions, but this way we'll get to cover more topics. So, Ms. Rankin, you get to answer this question.
So, this is a great question, and I would have to go along with Mr. Hahn said about our city staff. They are stretched, and this is a topic that hits close to home because I have family members who've lived in Redwood City since 1948, and they first purchased their home, and they're still there today. And they have a huge tree. It's a big, beautiful tree that's in their driveway, but unfortunately, the tree has grown so big that it has just completely almost ruined their driveway. And every time they try and come down to the city to get a permit to trim the tree or have it fixed or cut it, they are just, they're outright denied each and every time. And in the meantime, their driveway is being destroyed by this tree. So I think that on a, these things need to be addressed on a case-by-case basis. They do need some help from the city and a better response rather than just a simple no.
Thank you. Onto the next question, and it will be to Ms. Howard. What is your plan for affordable housing in Redwood City?
Thank you. That's a tough question. As you know, redevelopment money has been shut down, and the state took $10 million from the City of Redwood City that was to go to affordable housing. But I think we need to be more creative, and we can do it. I do know service groups in the northern part of the county. What they do is ask a city for a piece of land, and they do all the fundraising and provide the skills, and they build affordable housing for seniors. They've done two projects very successfully. Other cities are working with Heart to provide affordable housing in their communities. I think we're going to have to stretch ourselves and find more innovative ways to do it, but we should. It's the right thing to do. If we're going to address the diversity of our community, we need to include a wide variety of housing types in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
So I think it's going to be very, very important to be able to partner up with agencies such as Hip Housing, Heart, in order to be able to provide a lot of this housing. I've always said that we have the capabilities of partnering with private industry to help us do that. We could look at inclusionary housing as an option. Mr. Hahn mentions prior to AB 1229. I think there's a lot of things that we can do and collaborate with stakeholders, including developers as well, in order to be able to find solutions to provide affordable housing because, like I said, we are growing, and we have a lot of housing to meet. There are a lot of people moving into Redwood City, and we have to make sure that everybody has the availability, low-income workforce housing, whatever you want to call it, that housing is available for every economic level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn.
Sure. So as I mentioned earlier, I think it's really important to pursue options that are timely. Again, the community benefits package is a great idea, but it's an opt-in for developers. It's not a requirement, and it's It's not a requirement, and it's on a two-year timeline. A commercial linkage fee is something that San Mateo is already exploring, the city of San Mateo, and it's something we could be doing now. We just need the voice on the council to be able to articulate that and make that an agenda item and make that happen. Another thing, again, is to support AB 1229, and we really need an inclusionary housing ordinance, and that's what AB 1229 would give cities the authority to enact. It actually brings local control back to communities and allows communities to plan for their housing mix without having to fear litigation. And I think that's really important. And we also need to make sure that we don't plan developments that affect our affordable communities that we have now. For instance, the mobile home parks near the Salt Flats on Seaport Boulevard are going through rent increases because of the fact that there's speculation over development on the Salt Flats. So, we need to be careful about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. G.
One of the things I am very interested in promoting and making sure that we have is a community benefits program that articulates to our building partners and development partners that we want to partner in Redwood City with them. And that complete menu of whether it's affordable housing, parks, transit, all of the above, we need to identify that before they come here. Because as we know, unless we are one as a region, if we make it too hard to build here, they'll go down the street to San Carlos Belmont Mountain View, and then we wind up with nothing. The other aspect of it is that I am very interested in looking at providing incentives and let the market go from there. Higher density, less parking, other ways to incentivize the market to come to Redwood City and build affordable housing. 333 Main is a great example where they took the state density bonus to go higher and more dense to provide affordable housing. That doesn't go far enough that we need to look at new ways of providing market incentives for partners like developers and builders to come, be in Redwood City, and stay here in Redwood City.
Thank you, Ms. Rankin.
So, a little bit about me. When I was born here in Redwood City, I was born at Sequoia Hospital. And when I was brought home from the hospital, I was brought home to the Hallmark House, which is affordable housing. It's burned down now. But it's this affordable housing that allowed my family to grow and build here in Redwood City. It gave us an opportunity to have a start here in Redwood City. And if it weren't for affordable housing, I wouldn't be sitting here today. I would be willing to support a commercial linkage fee and inclusionary housing ordinance. Conversations like these do need to start happening. I don't believe that we will make it hard for developers to come. I believe it's very easy, and I feel like Redwood City is a growing, dynamic community, and developers are fighting left and right to come here.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert.
First of all, Redwood City is the leader in San Mateo County in building affordable housing. For a while, about 50% of what we were building was affordable housing, and we built about 23% of the county's affordable housing. We have an excellent track record. Unfortunately, the state robbed us of $10.7 million that was earmarked for investment in affordable housing. We need to continue to work in those areas to get the state to reinstate some of that. But in the meantime, it's about partnerships. I was on the board of Hart, and it's about partnering with, leveraging money through Hart. I can't remember, but I believe Hart leverages money at about 1 to 17, about a 1 to 17 ratio. We also look at the, again, continue to look at incentives through the Community Benefits Program, which hasn't even really begun to get started except that we launched the process. And I can tell you from my perspective as a council member, it will not be an opt-in. It will be mandatory for developers to invest in our community.
Thank you. On to the next question will be Mr. Schmidt beginning. What would be your number-one priority as a council member? How would you vote on an issue to effect the change in that area?
All right. Well, police and fire are, I mean, I don't know, there's a lot of priorities, but police and fire are a significant priority to me. As we continue to grow, and obviously, as a planning commissioner, I see a lot of that, and I've approved many developments, and I can see that we're growing substantially. So, one of the things that we have to, we have to pay attention to is that we need to make sure that our, whether it be fire or police, that they have the safety, the tools, the technology, the manpower to be able to respond to all of our calls. I think that's one of the most important quality-of-life elements that we have. So, as a council member, I'm always going to make sure that when it comes to looking at the budget, that public safety is always a top priority for us.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hahn.
So, for me, my top priority is responsible development. But here, in particular, I want to talk about traffic and transportation concerns. What we heard in a candidate's orientation meeting from our community development director is that the 101 Woodside Interchange Project has a timeline of about eight to 10 years to complete. So, bearing that in mind, with the traffic we already have on Woodside Road, on El Camino, on 101, what is our development doing to our communities that live along these corridors, our neighborhoods, our families? What are their commute times like? What are their exposure, what is their exposure to greenhouse gases like? And how does that affect them? And I think these concerns need to be taken into account, and we need creative solutions to address that. We need some leadership and new perspective to be able to bring some balance to the development decisions we're making.
Thank you, Mr. G.
I mentioned this in my opening comments. Our money in Redwood City is just like my money and your money at home. We don't get to print it. And so, the number-one issue beyond public safety and the city services we provide is we have to have the financial means to provide those city services. Without that, nothing else happens. 80% of our budget pays for labor, services, people, and we have to continue to work with our labor partners to make sure we have a sustainable budget, that we can pay for fire, we can pay for police. And part of what I've brought to the table and all of the roles I've played on SAM Trans, the other boards I've sat on, I have been put on the compensation committees to take a look at everything, not just salaries, but salaries, health care, retirement, pension liabilities, trying to guess where PERS rates are going to go, and they are going to go up. They're talking about as much as 10% increase in the next two years and more, that we have to look at it all and make sure that we have a balanced budget.
Thank you. Ms. Rankin.
I have a 13, 14-year background in public safety. I often attend seminars, and it's part of my daily job to stay on top of crime trends. Yesterday, I read an article that California was beginning to be known as the auto-theft capital of the United States. So, one of the most important things to me is public safety. When you build and grow your community and you have new businesses and new residents, one of the things that comes with that, unfortunately, is crime. And one of the things that Redwood City needs to be constantly on top of, we do not want to end up like our neighbors in the East Bay.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert.
My number-one priority is balancing the budget. It's real simple, although in Washington and in Sacramento, they don't seem to understand it. But it's living within our means. It's what we do at home. It's what we do at work, whether you run a nonprofit or a for-profit business or home bank account or a city. The reality is, it's foundational to everything we do. We can want great parks and great libraries and terrific public safety, but the foundation that that sits on is a balanced budget, and we've seen that everywhere. In Vallejo, public safety crumbled because they allowed their, they went bankrupt, and they couldn't have continued to afford to provide for that. Specifically, what would I do to achieve that? I've done it four years in a row, sitting right at the end of this dais, and that's vote-only for balanced budgets without using reserve funds.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Thank you. I have to agree. A balanced budget, budget is my top priority. We, in Redwood City, have come to expect good quality services, good public safety, good recreational opportunities. We cannot provide those services if we do not have a stable budget, a financially stable city, and work to bring revenues into the city. So, I, that's the top priority for me. How do we do it? I know the word's very overused, and that's partnerships, but it's how you do it. You bring in more economic development to raise revenue in the city and partner. Example is the Fire, San Carlos, and Redwood City merger. Wonderful opportunity of saving resources and providing better service. Another partnership in improving our infrastructure and building on it, we have a senior center that's outdated, falling apart. The Sequoia YMCA, I'm a board member. We're talking with the city of partnering and building a multi-generation facility at the Red Morton Center. So, these are the kinds of partnerships we need to do more of. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Mr. Hahn. Please tell us who your current employer is. What are your basic job duties? How has this work helped prepare you for serving on the city council?
So, currently, my dad owns a small business here in Redwood City, right in downtown. And what I do for him right now is I do property management. I help him with his paperwork. I help him, sometimes I go and clean up a mess, call a plumber, stuff like that. But my heart really is in the public sector. I spent a few years working for Child Support Services with San Mateo County and for the Elections Division as well. And there really is a different atmosphere in that sort of an agency. For everyone, from management up to entry level, is really invested in the community, and they really feel that what they're doing is a public service. And that's why I'm running, and that's the kind of atmosphere I enjoy. I personally do think that the city workers do need our support, and if we're going to be talking about balancing our budget, we need to make sure that we ask developers to invest more in our community. We ask more of people who are coming here to profit to do the right thing and make everyone prosper. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. G.
I'm the Vice President of Swinerton Management and Consulting in San Francisco, five offices throughout Northern California. We provide program, project, and construction management services for a number of public agencies. Over 90% of my work is for cities, counties, school districts, community colleges. On a daily basis, I'm interacting with city managers, public works directors, chancellors, presidents of colleges, and helping them with their capital improvement needs and the design and construction programs. Having that interchange and having that knowledge that all money is not green, it comes in different colors, helps me understand how to work a city budget, how to manage our physical assets, how to manage our infrastructure, how to manage parking and transportation, and how to insert construction in our downtown without disrupting the daily lives of our businesses and our residents. So, I feel very uniquely qualified at this point in time in Redwood City's renaissance to be able to add that expertise to what's going on in our city.
Thank you, Ms. Rankin.
I currently own and operate a bail bond insurance agency here in Redwood City. I'm a business owner, and I know the struggles of small business. I know how to balance a budget. I know how to manage payroll and employees, and I am deeply entwined into the criminal justice system. As I mentioned before, I am constantly aware of and on top of what's going on in our justice system and what's going on with crime trends, which is something that is majorly affecting California at this time. I'm also the president of the San Mateo County Bail Association, which is a league of business owners, which I have been president of that association for the past five years. So, I understand the needs of businesses and what they need to build and grow and become successful.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert.
I'm the Facilities and Transportation Manager for Crystal Springs Upland School in the San Mateo Hillsborough area. Primarily, I'm responsible every day for going in and ensuring the safety of over 80 staff and about 400 sixth through 12th graders. Gives me a high degree of responsibility. I balance budgets. I deal with HR. I deal with project management, land use planning, largely the same things I've been doing as a planning commissioner for eight years and on the city council for the last four years. But I think the number-one thing that my job gives me is that every day when I go to work, I can guarantee I have no idea how it's going to start, and I know when it's going to start, but I have no idea how it's going to start and how it's going to end. And I do a tremendous amount of complex problem solving, which is a skill that I bring directly to my work as a city council member also.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Thank you. I am a nurse, and most recently, I was employed by Sequoia Hospital as a physician and community liaison. And what I did was I was out in the community, visiting with the physicians who had independent practices throughout the community, not physicians employed by the hospital, but physicians who were trying to make a go of it independently, which in this day and age is really, truly difficult. I was a sounding board for them. I hope a problem solver. I hope a good listener. These are skills that are necessary in this day and age when doctors feel so challenged to be able to stay alive in this difficult economy. I also managed my husband's medical practice for 25 years, so I know about budgets, I know about hiring, I know about training, and I also know, again, about listening. These are all skills that I bring to a city council, skills that are so necessary in this day and age when you're dealing with a community of 80,000 who want to feel that their council members are listening to their voice and their needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. I'm a hard worker. I'm a Realtor at RE/MAX Redwood Shores, Marketing Manager for Carperline Multimedia, and I work part-time at Peninsula Infinity. And what prepares this, how does this prepare me to be a good council member? I learned how to be a great problem solver. When the chef at La Viga was almost, almost ready to move away from Redwood City due to a permit issue from many years ago, I not only helped him stay at his current location, but he's now expanding within Redwood City at his new restaurant, LV Mar. When I, I'm a consensus builder. When I first took on the chair of the Association of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, I walked 4,000 homes in order to bring that neighborhood association back to life, and I have managed complex budgets. I have maintained a million-dollar-plus budget when I was managing at Nordstrom's. And being able to manage that budget and maintaining a number-one department there is quite complex. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Mr. G. This is, "Should the city council financially support public art in Redwood City, and what are your thoughts related to art as an economic driver?"
Yes and yes. Thank you, Linda. No, we, arts are a very important part. That's why we have the Civic Cultural Commission, is to promote arts in Redwood City. And in my spare time, I am the President of the Board Directors of Broadway by the Bay. And when that opportunity came to bring Broadway by the Bay to the Fox Theater, it was a boom for me and for our city. Redwood City's vision was to become the theater district of the peninsula, and with the Century Theater, Dragon Theater, and Broadway by the Bay, we are the theater district of the peninsula. The first two shows of this season at Broadway by the Bay, Cats and Oliver, we brought 11,000 patrons to downtown Redwood City for the full theater experience of seeing a show, eating at our restaurants, and discovering Redwood City. And just this last completed show, we probably brought another 5,000 to 6,000 more patrons. Arts are part of Redwood City. We need to support it. We need to support it directly and indirectly through our Community Benefits Program and in partnerships.
Thank you, Ms. Rankin.
Again, yes and yes. Art is a part of who we are. It's a part of our culture. It gives us a sense of community, and it comes in many forms. It comes in artistically, in paintings, and in music, in theater, and it's something that we absolutely should support, and it will bring revenue to Redwood City.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert.
Absolutely. And we do, and we will continue to support that. It's something we've done through the Civic Cultural Commission. It's something we did. I was privileged to co-chair a subcommittee on public art with Councilmember Bain, which developed for the first time in Redwood City a guideline to how we do public art. And I understand art is a very broad concept, but I'll talk specifically about public art projects. And I think we need to continue to do this, also through partnerships. We have a great entity in Redwood City called the Redwood City Art Center, which just celebrated in these chambers a birthday, and I can't remember which one it was. I apologize. Barbara Britchke would know, but I'm sorry for doing that. But we have a great resource of art right here in the community, and the way that it drives economics is, I believe, it's glue that sticks people to a city. It takes it from being a nice, generic downtown, which may have great restaurants, entertainment, and making it a place that people will remember and come back to.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Many of you remember when we designed the Downtown Precise Plan, we had incredible public input, and we designed the downtown so that it would become the heart of our community, an outdoor living room where people would come and recreate and be entertained. That downtown plaza didn't happen without a lot of public input. It was designed to bring the arts, music, all kinds of entertainment to Redwood City, and it's been wildly successful. The city made a major investment in making that happen and continues to do so. There's now a Park and Arts Foundation, of which I'm a member, and that's going to be our way for the future in order to raise money and to help support the arts in downtown. I'm also part of the Bucket Brigade that goes around and collects money at the Friday night concerts and helps keep those Friday night concerts going. Does the city support the arts in Redwood City? Yes, it does. Should it do more? We're going to certainly try. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Absolutely. I come from, not drawing in art, but I am an artist. I've actually was out in LA for four years pursuing my acting career, where I became a member of the where I became a member of the Screen Actors Guild, and very proud of that. And I think Redwood City has done an absolutely phenomenal job in promoting the arts. And to Ms. Howard's comment in regards to culturally speaking as well, we have the Lebanese Festival, the Fiesta Patria Festival, the Lunar Festival, which Vice Mayor Gee tirelessly works on. I think Redwood City does a fantastic job, and I'm looking forward to making sure that it continues.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
Yes and yes. So I play the piano. I play the flute. I play the saxophone. And when I was at Kenyatta College, I helped organize an open-mic poetry slam session there, which was a lot of fun. And I do think the city could be doing more to support the arts. Specifically, I'd like to see the Main Street Monday Night Jazz Festivals come back, but maybe on a different night. I know the businesses down on Main Street feel a little left out of the downtown revitalization. They feel that a lot of the energy and renaissance has happened more close to Courthouse Square. So it would be nice to see that event come back. It would be nice to maybe see it happen at the same time as Music on the Square, because a lot of people feel that Music on the Square is a little too crowded now. It's a little too hard to get around. So maybe if we expanded Music on the Square so that there were two options for people on a Friday night, maybe that would draw business to Main Street. I would like to see that, and I would like to see us also partner more with Kenyatta College, with all our high schools, because it's really young people that really drive a lot of the cultural aspects of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to the next question, beginning with Ms. Rankin. If your positions support increased services, such as police and fire, what would you propose to cut in the city budget?
Well, that's a great question. One of the things with the city budget is that would be something that, once on council, I would like to sit down with this Brian Ponte, the city's financial director, and go over the city budget line by line and make really careful, thoughtful decisions on what could possibly be cut. But usually, as a business owner, before I venture into cutting services or cutting positions, I always like to explore new streams of revenue before I make decisions on what needs to be cut.
Thank you. Mr. Seibert?
It's been said from this day is that we have cut to the point, you can cut and be lean and mean, and eventually you cut so far you just flat-out get mean. And I believe that Redwood City has faced those kind of cuts. I do think we need to continue to work with our labor groups. We have done a great job. We instituted two-tiered benefits pension system long, about two and a half years, before the state of California figured out it was a good idea. And I think we need to continue to look at that. We need to continue to talk to our labor groups, and we'll be doing that successfully again very soon, about continuing to invest in their retirement. And I think that, we're a service organization. Over 80% of our budget is personnel costs. There really isn't a lot of other places to cut, and that's where we've got to continue to look. And the great news in Redwood City is we have excellent relationships with our labor unions. And last time around, with no contention at all comparative to other cities, we worked very hard collaboratively on a focused goal of balancing the budget and came to the table and got it done. So I'm completely confident that we'll be able to do it in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
With Redwood City's budget, 80% are labor costs. And we are already, when I was on the council, the council was running very lean. I mean, people were doing two and three jobs. It's because they wanted to, and they wanted the quality of service to be maintained in this community. I don't see us proposing cuts, honestly. I don't want to cut at the quality and the core of the services of Redwood City. What I do want to do is look for ways to bring in new revenues to the city and to look for ways to partner with other cities, the county, and other groups so that we can save money and provide additional services that bring in additional revenues. I think that's the way to go. The state keeps taking our money, and that is a real problem. We can't keep cutting to the bone and asking the people of Redwood City to keep accepting this. We have to find creative ways to make this happen so that we continue to provide the quality of service people have come to expect. And I think that's the way to do it. We also need to keep talking with Sacramento and tell them to stop taking our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
So rather than finding ways to cut the budget, how about finding ways to expand our revenue? Reaching out to our business owners that we know are ready to expand and making sure that they expand in Redwood City. Marketing Redwood City as the place to live, work, and play. And how about marketing to other businesses that are thinking of opening up a business somewhere in the peninsula and making sure that they realize that Redwood City is the place to do business? And my goal is not to put all the impact on the people that provide the quality of life for the residents. There are ways to do it. And Ms. Howard mentioned one of them, or I believe it be Mr. Seibert as well, is that it continues, we need to continue to collaborate with our unions. We need to continue to collaborate with all of you as well to find creative ways to ensure that we don't have to cut.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
Yeah, I'm encouraged to hear my colleagues on the dais say that they aren't looking at exploring cuts, because that's kind of where I'm at as well. I really think it's important to understand that the city workers are doing this extra work because they do feel their job is a public service, and we need to honor that. And we need to come up with creative revenue streams. So what are creative revenue streams? One option is to consider installing wireless downtown. Now, this wouldn't generate a whole lot of revenue, but for less than $10,000, wireless could be installed in downtown. This is something San Jose does. And when you log into this wireless, you get a splash page. And that splash page has a place where local businesses can advertise, where larger corporations can advertise, and it becomes a second option to pay for parking with your phone. And that's what San Jose does. We can consider that. We can also consider becoming a municipal reseller of gas and electricity. It doesn't require infrastructure, and it would actually, if all 80,000 residents of Redwood City signed on to such a deal, it would generate up to $7 million per year for Redwood City.
Thank you. Mr. Gee?
Thank you very much. I am not interested in cutting services, nor am I interested in raising taxes. We owe it to our community to provide the quality of services that we have now and continue to have Redwood City be a great place to live. There's no simple bullet here to how we do this. It's a combination of different things, as they have been in the past. San Carlos Fire is identified as a great example. Shared services is what I call that bucket. Redwood City currently provides and sells services to over 30 other agencies on the peninsula: IT, HR, payroll, fire. In exchange for providing those services, we receive revenue. Partnering with our labor groups, we've got to continue to do that because labor costs are going to increase. We've already heard from PERS that they're going to increase pension retirement, or they're going to change the rate of investment, and they're going to lower it from 7 3/4 to 7%, which will result in a 10% increase just in retirement. And economic development. Again, only 1/3 of our budget comes from business sales tax, so we've got to continue with economic development.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Mr. Seibert. Do you anticipate the Cargill tract becoming an issue again soon?
No, I don't. This council voted 6 to 0 to 1. One person abstained because they were accused from it to deny the application. Cargill got rid of its space, laid off all its staff, and moved out of town. I don't foresee it coming back in the near future. But if it does, I think if it does come back, it has to come back in a way that wasn't distracting to our community, trying to get done what it needed to do last time. Since it's gone, look at the boom we've seen in downtown and in transit-oriented housing. If it does come back, we'll consider the application and take a look at it and given the scrutiny we have given it. I can also tell you this, there are problems we need to solve in terms of open space, in terms of controlling flooding in the Friendly Acres neighborhood. So there are opportunities out there we need to look at on that land to make it more useful than just sitting there harvesting salt.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
I do not see this coming back in the near future. Right now, it's up at the state level, excuse me, the federal level. The federal level, because there are questions that have not been answered, and it may take a long time before they are answered. And quite frankly, I'm glad, because we have so much going on with our downtown. We have a downtown precise plan that we're responsible for in bringing to completion successfully. We need to manage our downtown successfully. We need to focus the energy of the city on this. And for the time being, I'm glad there isn't the distraction that we'd be working on Cargill and having staff spending their time on the application that comes in incomplete. I'm glad, actually, that the city council did reject the incomplete application. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
No, and I've said this for quite a long time. I don't expect to see this, and I was thinking that even during the process in my lifetime. And both Ms. Howard and Mr. Seibert mentioned it perfectly. Look at what happens when all the energy, well, negative energy for that matter, because there was a passionate issue, is taken and is put into our downtown area and the development of all the housing, all the cultural events that we're having. It's all good. And I'm going to continue to enjoy seeing that occur.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
Yeah, so you know, I don't think, unlike some of my colleagues, that this issue is a distraction. It may not come back in the near future, but I think what citizens of Redwood City need to know was that at the last Plan Bay Area meeting where regional housing numbers were approved, our mayor was there talking about the salt ponds and talking about how the Williamson Act, which protects the salt ponds as open space, is set to expire. And she made it a point of having that be something, a statement that was voted on and approved by the Plan Bay Area Board. And so I think it's kind of misleading to say that it's not an issue. And I think the reason why it's become a passionate issue is because you guys need to know where we stand. Of course, as council members, we'll look at any development that comes to us, but you need to know our values. So my values are, I'm happy to say, I'm proud to say, I'm the only candidate up here who's actively worked against this development, not just for the environmental concerns, but for the traffic concerns, the effect it would have on our downtown revitalization. And I think it's important that we're straightforward with you about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gee?
I don't anticipate it coming back to our city in the near future. As Councilmember Seibert said, the development partner, DMB, has closed shop, released staff, and gone into other things. I think the reason that it was a distraction, because it was divisive to our community. And the biggest challenge I had with the Salt Works Development Proposal is that we stopped listening to each other. The passions and the emotions ran so deep that we couldn't even have a conversation about how people felt, one way or another. And that emotion gets in the way of building community. And as we build community, as we look at our downtown living room, Courthouse Plaza, as we look at our Downtown Precise Plan, as we look at all the other things we're doing, we have to do it together. And when we stop listening to each other, that's not a good thing. And so it was a distraction from the sense that people were so emotional and passionate that they just stopped listening to each other and let their positions take over. And so I hope it doesn't come back.
Thank you. Ms. Rankin?
I don't think that it will come back for quite some time. I do believe that there is a possibility that this will come back up again. So I think that we just need to be mindful of that and maybe keep it on the back burner. But I don't believe that it's totally off the table. I think that we should just, like I said, be mindful and keep an eye on it. I hope that it doesn't come back, but it may.
Thank you. All right, the next question with Mr. Seibert. I believe, no, we're switching to Ms. Howard, all right? This is, what is the greatest long-term problem for Redwood City, roughly 10 years out in the future?
Good question. Other than the budget, I think you're tired of hearing about the budget. I think the greatest challenge, I don't want to call it a problem. I think our greatest challenge is ensuring the investment we made in building a successful downtown is handled and managed well. I've said this before, we need to manage our success successfully so that people will continue to want to live in downtown, come enjoy the amenities we have downtown, and consider it the gem of the Redwood City area. That's a big challenge, and it's going to come with a lot of hard work. And I'm prepared to do that. I think it's going to take a few years. But I think if we start right now and we anticipate that we are going to have increased housing, increased traffic and parking, and we start managing it now, I think we'll be able to manage it successfully so that we ensure we protect the investment that the people of Redwood City have put their money into.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Can I have you repeat the question, please?
Yes, the question is, what is the greatest long-term problem for Redwood City, roughly 10 years or more out in the future?
I think it's going to be land use issues. And more specifically, and something that I have talked about before, is making sure that we have the appropriate housing for all income levels. Narrowing it down even more than that is housing for our elderly. Walking precincts. I met an elderly lady by the name of Maggie, and her concern was that as we see the pricing of housing go up, she's not expecting to be in her three-bedroom, two-bath home much longer and where she's going to go. Redwood City is an aging community, period. We're not getting any younger. And I think it's important that we, right now, start looking at ways in providing homes for our elder community.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
Again, I would say that it's responsible development, and that umbrella does cover affordable housing, traffic concerns, making sure that we're communicating with, for instance, Sequoia Union High School District, who just had a meeting on Wednesday last week. And they had projections for future enrollment that didn't take into account the building we're doing now. And the rationale was that, well, we don't know who exactly, what types of folks are going to move into the units we have now. So these discussions we need to have. And we need to make sure that when, for instance, the 101 Woodside Project has a timeline of eight to 10 years, we need to start thinking about, how are we building? Are we building close enough, not just to transit, but public transit? And what are we doing to make sure that we're protecting our quality of life and ensuring that everyone in Redwood City is benefiting from our growth?
Thank you. Mr. Gee?
I won't harp on budget, as we've had talked about earlier, because it is a long-term issue. But I think one of the greatest challenges that we have as a community is to manage change. We are in a very unique point in the lifecycle of our country. Today, we have five generations alive at one time. Our seniors, Maggie, I can guarantee it, my in-laws, they don't even have a computer or an internet. And then our younger generation, if you call them, they won't talk to you. But if you text them, they'll respond right away. And so how do we balance five generations, growing up in different decades, with different work ethics and different expectations? Because not everyone is going to want a car. Not everyone wants to take the train. Some people want to take a bike. Some people don't want that three-bedroom, two-bath, mow the lawn every Saturday. And how do we bring everyone along as one community over the next decade? I think that change and how we manage it together is one of our biggest challenges and opportunities.
Thank you. Ms. Rankin?
I actually really like what Vice Mayor Gee said about how do we manage the different generations that we have currently living in Redwood City. One of the challenges that we're going to face is we need to have a council that represents all generations in Redwood City. My children were born and raised in Redwood City, and I have a daughter who's a sophomore at the University of Arizona. And I think all the time about affordable housing. And I think to myself, she's going to be, she might be coming home in the next two years. And I love her to death, but you know, I don't want her living with me. I want her to be able to have an apartment in Redwood City, her hometown, should she choose to do so. And the way it stands right now, it looks like my baby girl might have to live over in the East Bay. And I know that's not where she wants to go. I know she wants to be here, home, with her friends, where she grew up. And that's what I would like to see happen. So that's going to be a major challenge in our future, affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. Seibert?
I think our greatest challenge over the next 10 years is something that Jim Collins calls the hubris for success. We get so comfortable, we start to think, we're good at this, we're good at balancing budgets, we're good at building downtowns, we're good at building communities, we have fun, and it begins to slip away very quickly. I will guarantee the cities that have faced catastrophe across the nation did not, you know, wake up one day really healthy, and the next day say, let's completely fall apart. They did it because they got too comfortable. They got too comfortable. You know, the reality is, it is about the budget. In seven years, if we don't do something about the state's takeaway, we'll be out of money in seven years. That is within that 10-year window. With public safety, with making sure we stay connected, with making sure we continue to manage our diversity and manage the maintenance and our growth. The reality is, we do have a toehold on greatness, but we can't just sit back and say, look how great we are, and not do the hard work that it takes to maintain that.
Thank you. The next question is, beginning with Mr. Schmidt. Can or should the city act to get more electric car charging stations? Where, how, and is this a public or private role?
Thank you for that question. I've spent almost two years with Tesla Motors, so I truly understand the importance of I've spent almost two years with Tesla Motors, so I truly understand the importance of charging stations. And as a planning commissioner, there hasn't been one development that I have not asked the developers to provide some type of charging infrastructure for these vehicles. Even one developer who just didn't even realize at that time, you know, saying, you're absolutely right, we didn't even think of it. Private role or public role, I think, for right now, if we're asking the developers, I think they should be able to handle that infrastructure. But I think the city right now is doing a great job in providing charging stations in and around the city. We've got them in the public library as well, right across the street. There's three or four charging stations right there. So I think the city's doing a pretty good job right now, and I think it's going to be important that planning commissioners and council members continue to ask developers as they move into Redwood City to provide that infrastructure as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
Yeah, I think this is something that should absolutely be promoted, and I think it's important, not just for the electric cars, but I have a friend living in San Jose who uses the electric car chargers to power his electric wheelchair. So it's important for the disabled community as well to have these chargers. So I would definitely make sure that, or would like to see that this be promoted. And I think it's really important, a lot of cities now are looking at their building and looking at how to build green, and a lot of cities are exploring the idea of having, at least maybe not for small homeowners, but at least for businesses that come into the community, to make sure that their buildings have electric car charging stations as a matter of common practice. And maybe that will extend later on to homeowners, but we should at least start with the people who can pay for it the easiest.
Thank you. Mr. G.
As a city, we've done a good job of planting seeds, and we've done that with the electrical vehicle charging stations that are currently throughout Redwood City through our MTC grant. What's coming next is, starting January one, is the new Cal Green Building Code, and that means anything new has got to be built to lead silver. And part of that menu is alternative transportation. We have to do more to promote what we have and tell people where it is. Right now, I don't think we do a very good job of showing where the maps of all the public and private charging stations are, so that if you do have electric vehicle charging car, you know where to go to get your charge. And so we can do more, we can definitely do more. But our role is to plant seeds and to communicate to everyone where those opportunities are.
Thank you. Ms. Rankin?
Absolutely. I think we need more charging stations in Redwood City. Just to go back to another story about my daughter, when she turned sixteen and she was going to get a car, and I said, honey, what kind of car do you want? She's like, I want an electric car. And I said, well, why would you want an electric car? She's like, because I don't want to spend money on gas. And I thought, hmm, smart girl, but you know what? Where are you going to charge your car? What if it runs out and you need to keep charging it? So one of the reasons why I didn't end up buying her electric car is because we didn't have enough electric car charging stations here in Redwood City. So I would absolutely like to see more of those.
Thank you. Mr. Seabird?
Yeah, Vice Mayor G mentioned some of the ways that we've done it, and we need to continue to do that. Both not only have the city continue to do it, as we've done in areas, including right over across the street, but we also need to continue to requirement and development as we do through our green building codes. But I'll go one step further, and that is this. A long time ago, this city decided that one of the ways that it would promote responsibility in the environment was to start doing it ourselves, to start updating our own lighting in our own facilities, to start updating our own toilet fixtures, to start updating things that we own in city infrastructure. And one of the things that I would support is for the city to lead the way by example. It's just like being a parent. If you want your kids to do something, then you need to do it first. And I think the city can invest in our own vehicle fleet, in electric vehicles, and begin to build our own charging stations that people can use when we're not using them, but also that we need to move towards a more electrified fleet of our own vehicles as we did with hybrids. It's time to move to the next level.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
I agree with the comments made. I do believe the city of Redwood City has led the charge, so to speak, in setting up these electric charging stations. The MTC grant went a long way. I do believe we need to do a better job of educating the public of where they are and where they can find them. I know I see them, but I'm looking for them, but I think we need to do a better job. But I think we need to take a step further. Surveys are showing that young people today are delaying the time that they get driver's licenses. I'm not sure you know that, but the average age of a driver's license right now, I believe, is twenty to twenty-one years old. Now, when I was a kid, I couldn't wait to get that driver's permit and get going and drive a car. I like this trend. What it's telling me is maybe young people are deciding that they don't need a vehicle at all right now. So I think that's a very positive thing, and I'm very enthused about the bike share program in downtown. I'm enthused about trolleys and shuttles being brought in around our city. Maybe we can change a trend altogether, not only electric vehicles, but no vehicle at all. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we'll begin with our closing statements. It'll be two minutes each, beginning with Mr. G, and coming back this way.
Linda, thank you. Thank you, the League. Thank all of you for spending part of your Wednesday night here, learning about our roles and our desire to serve our city. I want to take a moment to share with you that I've been honored to serve as your Vice Mayor, but I also am honored to serve as the Vice Sheriff Sam Trans, the Vice Chair of the Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance, Chair of the San Francisco Airport Roundtable, President of my Homeowners Association, as I've mentioned, President of the Broadway by the Bay Board Directors. I don't share that with you just to say I'm not home for dinner during the week, but everything in our community is all connected. The quality of life in our city is just not about one issue. It involves finance, the arts, stewardship, public safety, parks, libraries, traffic, public transit. It is all connected, and we have to work all these complex issues together. We cannot succeed by just focusing on one issue at a time. The other aspect is that city government does not stop at city limits. While we need to focus on the issues in our city that we've talked about this evening, we must also work together with our neighbors, the county, and the region to solve larger issues such as water, housing, economic development, traffic, and public transit. I've built these relationships across the region. I'm working these issues with our neighbors and the county, and I'm committed to work and continue to work every day on your behalf to solve these issues that affect our quality of life. I think I've demonstrated the leadership, the ability to solve problems, and to work with elected officials throughout the county on these regional issues. And the other aspect, and it was alluded to in one of the questions, to look ahead and imagine what if, without having to draw everything, without having to build everything. I respectfully ask for your support to continue my hard work for another term and to continue to make Redwood City a great place to live, raise a family, and have a business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
So thank you again to the members of the public for being here today. Again, my name is James Hahn, and to go back in a circle to what I said at the beginning, I come to you today as someone who's born and raised in Redwood City, as someone who's had family members who have had to leave because of the housing costs here and who almost didn't come back himself because of that. I think Redwood City is doing a lot of great things, but we need to make sure there's some balance to the direction that the city's going in. And we need new faces on the council to make sure that the perspectives and the concerns being articulated as we grow include folks who are younger, include folks who want to be more inclusionary, and include folks who are concerned about making sure that the working families in our community and our tradition of being a community where housing types are diverse, income levels are diverse, and our community is diverse, remains that way. And I think it's really going to be an election where we need to decide what sort of, what sort of direction we're going to take as our community revitalizes, grows, and becomes a place that is a destination city. I'm proud to be the only candidate up here who, again, has worked against developments that are unsustainable and a threat to public safety and our quality of life, like the Salt Flats development. I'm proud to be the only candidate up here who does not take money from developers' interests or real estate interests, so I can be an independent voice for you, the members of the public here on the council. And I'm proud to be the only member here who has been in these council chambers for the past year, talking about affordable housing and perhaps being a thorn in the side of some of the folks up here. But I think these issues are really important, and I'm really passionate about them, and I want to make sure that going forward, our city is a place that reminds me of the best things I remember when I was a kid. So thank you very much. I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. And once again, thank you to the League of Women Voters, and thanks to all of you for taking the time this evening to learn more about the candidates seeking this very important position. I have been proud to serve this community as a planning commissioner for over four years. Our city is growing, and our next council member will need to bring the proven experience, the skills, and the fresh perspective to be able to plan for the future in a smart and sustainable way. We need to protect our public safety sector, expand economic opportunities for all, and ensure that there is housing for all economic levels. But most importantly, we need to continue to find more ways to engage with all of you, and that includes our youth. We live in a very fast society, and most find it difficult to even step out of their doorways to get to know their neighbor. Our leaders of tomorrow feel that their voices are not important, and our elder community worries about the rising costs of housing. I know right now, whether as Chairman of the Planning Commission or as your next council member, that my job will be to ensure that yours, small businesses, and my quality of life here in Redwood City is second to none. I have the proven experience, the skills, the passion, and the fire in my belly to help ensure this. I would humbly ask for your vote on November 5th.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
Thank you. At the Redwood Shores Community Association Candidates Forum, the member of the audience asked a great question. What quality do you possess that separates you from the other candidates? I'm a nurse, and we know that being on the city council is a very stressful job. I know CPR, I know the Heimlich maneuver, I'm trained and ready for any emergency procedure, and I think that's a valuable asset to have on your city council. That being said, everyone here, regardless of your occupation, recognizes that experience, the experience you gain from one year to the next makes you better at what you do. There's no better teacher than experience. I feel that same way about representing you as a city council member. My experience makes me more knowledgeable and better prepared to make an immediate contribution to Redwood City. It has given me a greater understanding of the political process and how things get done. I'm very proud of our accomplishments, but a city is always a work in progress, and we have more to do. We need to be exploring new and better ways to transport people throughout our community. We need to look at improving and providing additional parking options in and around downtown, balance our housing supply with the growing demand, and we must continue to explore new ideas that ensure our city stays financially sound and makes the best use of your tax dollars. My husband Steve and I have lived in Redwood City for thirty-two years, and we believe that this community is the best community to live, work, play, and raise a family. If elected, I believe I can make an immediate contribution to Redwood City. I have delivered for you in the past, and if given the opportunity, I would be honored to do so again. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this Candidates Forum, and for all of you, both in the audience and at home, thank you so much for taking the time to learn about the candidates for your city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seabird?
Thank you, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters for putting this on and for all the work that you do, raising the awareness of voting in our community, and thank you all for spending the evening with us. My top priority at City Hall has been really simple, maintain a great quality of life in Redwood City, so it's a place we all desire to live, work, and play. For the past four years, I've worked hard at City Hall to be a voice for every resident in Redwood City for fiscal responsibility and quality of life issues. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve my community on the city council and live in this incredible community where I'm raising my family. We have balanced the city's budget every year without devastating cuts to public safety or neighborhood services, and we've also put away reserve funds for the next rainy day. I'm focused on top-notch police and fire departments, well-maintained streets that are safe for pedestrians and bicycles, parks, libraries, community centers where seniors and children gather, great public schools, a thriving new downtown Redwood City, and a local economy that attracts new companies and great jobs. Looking forward, we need to continue to manage new growth, use our tax dollars very responsibly, manage utility costs, and continue the renaissance of our great downtown. As I said in the beginning, I truly believe Redwood City has a toehold on greatness, and now more than ever, we need solid, experienced leadership to ensure we continue the momentum that we've gained the last four years. Starting next week, when absentee ballots are delivered, I would be honored to have your vote and honored to continue to serve this community for four more years on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rankin?
I just want to go back really quick to what Vice Mayor G said about the change in the demographics and how we have five generations that are currently living here. There was a study done in Stanford that says just that. And I believe that we, as residents of Redwood City, have a responsibility to elect candidates who will not only represent this new demographics, but who will also attract them. And we need people on council who have an in-depth understanding of modern technology and its limitless possibilities. Redwood City is growing fast and quickly becoming a bustling city. We need people on council that will think outside of the box and think in terms of being more of a city environment. Now, my expertise is in public safety and in high tech. In case I didn't mention, I worked at Hotmail and Excite. And these are two major issues that will be facing Redwood City within the next five to seven years. But most importantly, we have to work together to ensure that our city remains safe. If we do not have a safe city, we will not have people to come patronize our businesses or want to live here. Now, I have run a strong campaign, and I am ready to tackle the tough issues that face Redwood City's future. I respectfully ask for your vote on November 5th, and I look forward to representing you, the residents, and businesses of Redwood City. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's give the candidates a warm applause. Thank you. Just to remind you that we have six excellent candidates running for three seats on the Redwood City Council. I would remind you also that the League of Women Voters has a website, www.smartvoter.org, which will have your entire ballot available and information about the candidates, and hopefully a video of this particular forum. Also, I'd like to thank my League people here this evening, Joanne Bruegman, our timekeeper, Shirley Deemarey helping with the questions, Diana Post, Ellen Hope, and Lisa Conrad. So we have a very good group helping us tonight. And just remember to vote, and thank you so much for coming. Good evening.
Thank you. (applause)